And now can you see the board members? Great, getting there. Did I turn it off? Camera's off? No? Is that on? Andrew, can you hear me? All right, here. All the things. All the things. Okay. I don't know if I can work around all these audience members. Okay.
All to order. The specials of council for Y point first point nine one. Since this is a official meeting. It's just what I in the city republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Here.
Leo, here. Lewis, here. Peterson, here. Trustor, here. Stanton, here. We have four.
Okay, thank you. Uh, city man, your comments other than welcome everybody. Warren, that's right.
Mayor, mayor, mayor.
Mayor, come. I welcome Scott Warren, his first official live in person. Other than that, it's my Alex, city man.
Okay, Mr. Merrick, uh, so we're going to the soup service, the they are on the agenda, so allow you guys to make your actions under under that and uh, guest speakers, who we're gonna come up soon. Just to quickly go over what's happening right now, let's talk as in person, hybrid meeting. All we're doing right now is we're live streaming via Zoom. So there's not going to be any public participation via Zoom, so but people already were watching here. That's what's up there. Let's see. I'll have the full city, uh, city managers report for Monday's meeting. This meeting has been advertised as a special meeting to allow councils to take action on items ten A and B. Scott Dean had brought up, um, the fact that he had a gap between our moratorium and the adoption, official adoption of the, of, of the ordinances. In order to tighten that up, um, we advertise this as a, as a special meeting, uh, which will allow you to be happy first to make actions as council to those two ordinances. Uh, you'll take action on this item ten, hopefully Monday, uh, items ten, ten A and ten B. Items nine A, excuse me. Items nine A, B and C, um, there's no need for you all to make an action online tonight, so just a minute to get to those. And that's all right there, Mr. Merrick.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the city manager and council? Will we have any agenda changes?
Yeah, under sections ten A and B, construction ordinances, I would like to recuse myself. If I have an historic or clean household associated with my business, it's subject to
Okay. We need to vote on that or can just do a see your first
Yeah, I would, I would probably recommend that you go down depending on how you may have a chance to look at your parents to that point in your program. But generally speaking, if we do formally vote on it, you're going to see a better position to the extent that allow her to declare it. So if she's not declared to her applicant, if you were in agreement, you had an issue with it, I would take a vote on it, record the minutes.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I think that moves to have four recuse from items ten A and B.
There's a word for that. Okay, motion by Louis, second by Trustor, to approve of council person Stanton's request to recuse herself from items ten A and B. You have a question, special on that? If not, uh, who's culpable? Can we do the voice for?
No, I'm not, so I'm just
Either or, but
Certainly either or, if you do a vote call, you're certainly doing more formal protest.
Lewis, yes. Trustor?
Yes.
Stanton? Not voting. Peterson, yes. Leo, yes. Dean?
Yes.
And Beckman?
Yes.
And we'll get back to what is the votes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is where we're, uh, we're just looking at her agendas again. The agenda that I take that over here, which is strong, I have the questions added to it. So I don't know if people are on the website, but we're number one, number off, we've almost printed it on the website, so.
Okay. You know, we have time.
Lot of products.
Okay. So next agenda, I have is, uh, our introduction of guest speakers. Legal, uh, legal attorneys, research attorneys. Chris Patterson here at Fady Schultz, and I think there's three of us that are working, I feel like. Our introduction is sort of coming late, it's a little bit backwards for us, but it's pretty engaged with the city over the last week and now that we're here before you even brought up council, actually interviewing yourself, so. I would, it's a little bit out of context, it's normal, but we certainly appreciate the opportunity to work with the city. I think that for some of you who don't know, it's probably relevant to talk about a little bit of background about myself, also our firm, and then I think I was sort of, I've gotten engaged with the city, and then certainly, uh, we have a lot to worry about the city, we're open and look forward to working with the city council, and what we understand are sort of some media legal pages and those other items that are presented to us. Uh, so myself, I actually grew up in the thumb, uh, long time agricultural farmer, my family has farmed for a long time. We had three hundred acres, we had a fraction, we had a hundred ton of cattle. I always joked at my grandsons, at least that I'm aware of two occasions, one was on his thirtieth anniversary, not his fiftieth anniversary, and then he once prepared a bunch of eggs for two days, but with my grandsons, apparently it's appropriate. After sort of growing up in the thumb, I went to Western for undergrad, and everybody likes to know sports allegiances, so W U undergrad, MSU law school, so hopefully that sort of works for the group. Can't change that now, so. But after sort of going through law school, then I did go and I clerked for the federal Eastern District of Michigan, so I was in Eastern District working for a judge who decided a federal cases in the district court. Uh, we did get a SIPI designation each year in the sixth circuit, so we were both at a lower court level, and then we sort of had a special designation to temporarily look at appellate cases that would be sort of across the entire sixth circuit, which is multiple states, so Michigan and Ohio, other states that are within that district. I didn't actually lose that job when you get hired, you have a specified term, so I have to leave in two years, eventually the judge is sort of like okay, you know, about the real world, nice stepping stone, but eventually you should figure this out, so. I left there and I started working for the guys that are at Fady Schultz, who I work for now. They started the firm in two thousand and eight, sort of with the idea to kind of start something new. Um, they had worked for a large firm for a long time and had the idea that there was a way to sort of provide better, more on point municipal services for clients, so that was kind of like the impetus that they started at the firm, there was four of them. And despite the fact that I practiced eleven years, now I've been practicing nine, Bill, who's also a partner, he's supporting you guys. I was only the ninth lawyer there. Interestingly enough, now as of today, we're at twenty six. Along the way, we picked up Jake Woody, so I'll let Jake sort of explain himself before I kind of move on in the history of where the terms come from.
Sure, so my name is Jake Woody, um, I grew up in Lexington, Michigan, I did undergrad, grad, I took law school at Western Michigan, Coolie University. It's like Chris, I am a transplant to Western Michigan, my wife, Lise, is a Rouge senior at Catholic Hospital, you know, kind of I've been at Fady Schultz for three and a half years, uh, I work in the zoning planning firm. Certain purposes, my work disposition, amendment, drafting, a lot of litigation related to the same, both in the zoning, the graphic party context. And I've been involved in a interesting constitutional litigation, first and second case cases. And also in contract negotiations, pretty much the whole amount of our business.
Excellent, okay, and I think, and you're not, I forgot to mention that I did, I was actually in Lansing where our office or our, our, that's sort of physical plant is located, although given that you've sort of just now come back to your first sort of in person meeting, we're sort of pretty thinking the entire physical plant thing, the fact that it can sort of be mobile, so. I met my wife back in December thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, she liked Grand Rapids better than Lansing, I could really debate that with her, so we ended up moving to Grand Rapids where I sort of work at now. And I just, I was talking when we were speaking to cities down last week with respect to sort of disclosing any conflicts, and I was just sort of, I guess, an over disclosure, we obviously do frequent target. Uh, we have friends that they both live here, and I think we probably visited the Jake Brandon studio too many times, so I over that up there. So after sort of adding on Jake, we ended up adding on seven or eight additional lawyers, I think. That's our total firm, and just so you kind of get the picture, um, we mostly do specialize just as sort of municipal focused services and clients, so I did do a break down through that. And our sort of municipal practice group that, and I, we have nine attorneys total who are working on all sort of general municipal matters, whether it's contract, we're certainly dealing with some issues with, we're calling trash and volatile jurisdictions, uh, whether it's zoning, planning, ordinances, uh, cell towers, etc. So the one benefit that we have is we probably currently represent maybe over a hundred and thirty five clients throughout the upper pencil and lower pencil, again, sort of leverage and technology, it's now sort of all municipal clients are on C P with that, all of course to do it for sixteen months. We've, in addition to our amounting, we have two lawyers that are doing a hundred percent paid or employment, so that's collective bargaining plus employment issues. In addition to that, we have one lawyer in addition to those eleven who is doing our full time tax tribunal work, so that's handling your tax deals, going to the Michigan tax tribunal, there's an entire tribunal case, etc. Uh, advising the accessory, advising boards of review. And then in addition to that, we have two senior attorneys, uh, one's a member, and one that sort of comes with a lot of, a lot of sort of experience on litigation. And so as you can imagine, we try to be very practical with the solutions that we do offer clients, but litigation just, it does happen, and so you have to deal with that. With respect to those sort of a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty clients, uh, we do work with those sort of two senior attorneys on all of our sort of litigation support, so we probably have to be thirteen, fifteen lawyers, kind of a hundred percent dedicated possibly for our municipal clients. In addition to that, I think we sort of pride ourselves in getting involved in all local municipal associations, so whether it's M M L, uh, N T A, we go around and do presentations, we do speaking engagements, we had, my bill started many years ago, the idea that we really should sort of give back to municipal community by offering sort of a monthly evener. Obviously that would self interest, we have a marketing benefit there as well, but we actually spend a lot of time and energy sort of developing these substantive areas each month. And so we sort of use that to develop our expertise and trying to sort of stay on top of the competition, so for instance, most municipalities are still dealing with outdated sign regulations, that would be a good example where either it's a case that was decided after two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, and there's still clients that have sort of updated those. So we're still sort of following those new bases that are coming out of the sixth circuit, the fifth circuit, sending updates to try to just keep everybody aware, the benefit is at the same time, we're sort of on the cutting edge, getting the expertise, seeing these new bases that are coming down. Um, and then I just think sort of the last thing that I would probably offer, and I open up to any questions, just, um, just with respect to that, we try to build relationships with our clients, I think, and certainly know that you got a lot more in your analysis than we do at this moment, and so we're sort of here to provide, we understand, which is for legal framework, to the substantive issues that you guys are hearing, and we sort of have a first wish, I guess, of those items that are on the horizon, first to work on for the city. And I'll talk a lot, so I apologize for that as well.
Council, any specific questions? Can Ryan share a little bit with some of the
So the first question?
Yes.
Yeah, so we immediately sent the information on the, it's all important, it's obviously both our, other interface. Outside of that, I think they're already receiving information on the Horizon small cell permits. They need to be able to show that one, um, so they have that information as a proxy, and
Yes.
starting to review on that. Then we're just going to keep going, so Adam, there's funny, there's mine that are working on it, they can help us with, so.
Scott, just to follow up there, uh, I read his point on the voting home works, has the council had a chance to review that?
They have, well, go ahead.
So, yeah, so we have looked at them, and I think the one thing that we would sort of offer that we were talking to Cindy is we, there's no red flags, I guess, that we would represent a racist city council, and looking at their subsidy, I think, since we're sort of coming into the late, there were clearly properly decisions that were made with respect to specific terms or substantive provisions that are in those ordinances. And we sort of, we really want to have some further development on maybe what the thinking was and the decisions made, uh, there, so nothing sort of that we can see that's problematic, I think, we understand the approach, I'm assuming that's being taken, which is we add this additional regulation, and even if we were to suggest that there are other state code provisions that already apply to these uses, we're sort of adding another layer that would specifically address that concern, and then provide some additional defenses, some additional sort of compliance requirements. And if there's further sort of specific requirements, we can get into the orbit from the sound of the agenda, um, if there's sort of further development that the city council would expect from us, they would consider providing.
I don't follow up, I'm not sure if it's our open, but and all these have run into this issue.
No. I will tell you that the, sort of the hottest issue that's currently happening in the university is trying to figure out how to deal with sort of two things that are parallel to this. Uh, one being short term rentals, again, dealing with sort of how exactly do you classify the use that you're actually putting up to whether it's and you're trying to balance the fact of, can you pick sort of a transitory time period, and is that a hard line cut off that you can then decide is it rolling or is it short term rental? Kind of consistent with when we looked at your definitions here of trying to define a voting home. Also similar to try to, if you were trying to draw a line, I guess, the, obviously there are households, we know that those would exist, and so we're trying not to necessarily regulate, regulate them under the same framework. But then not have someone suggest that it would be exempt by possibly calling themselves a house code. The other one that we run into sort of continuously that also we heard this is a situation where a use sort of gets into a jurisdiction before you get regulations on the books, and you're sort of left with trying to do, what do you do in the aftermath, just sort of regulating that, you get a compliance, you take sort of a straight position and appropriate it. And that's kind of a consistent problem with marijuana patients and caregivers, because once the two thousand and app went in place, a lot of these found these poor, very, perlopsohereditary, and some of them, they put no regulations on the books related to caregivers, thinking that's safe auto control. Ultimately, even more recently, as of March of last year's, we've heard decided that you're good regularly, and at least through zone, and so the position now becomes similar to the situation that you, you sort of have explicitly addressed it by carving out even in your moratorium, but what do you do with those caregiver, ever similar to the usage you have created in your jurisdiction that are already operating, that you now want to sort of adapt the organs for and have that coming in from the fly, and so that's sort of similar regulatory growth that's been given here with these power departments, also being layered on with zoning, trying to sort of combat that nonconformity issue that kind of arises, and then also then sort of being able to go forward in compliance, basically, or both of those ordinances, or possibly at least if there are uses that were carved out, it would still have to have your, um, triennial urban crisis.
I guess neither decides what can be a leader in, I think, areas, one on is short term rentals, that's better than a lot of it. And I gotta think it's household issue as an extension of, of short term rentals, which is auto crime. In Michigan, uh, communities of, plenty of late communities. Oh, these are lakes up north, you can just see this thing. You know, really becoming
Yeah, I think
Especially with what's happening, people want remote learning, people want to get out of cities, to point at I, I guess, I think that's what concerned us a lot when we first got the heads up. This was coming, coming, coming quite a few there. I don't know if that's a little bit
So, I think Brian had sent something, we had a rubber minutes, this was at the whole conference, and, um, one of the things that also
Yes, so we sort of immediately followed up with them, and they also immediately followed up with Brian, he was able to get sent back, they all conditioned to sort of engagement, they also wanted to sign or release on the files, that was immediately sent back to them. Uh, we've been in communication with them, as far as I sort of understand it, at this very minute, uh, based on communications this morning, the files have sort of been put together, there are the processes to be transmitted, and then they have, yeah, so we need to meet with them, and we have certainly so we're going to, uh, we actually have a meeting scheduled with city tomorrow, and then we'll work, we have sort of associated meeting with them as well. So I assume that will probably be complete by the end of the week.
Any other?
I guess I will just like clarification, um, I didn't completely understand, um, your answer about, uh, voting homes, did you say that you all wanted the opportunity to look at it one more time, or?
So I guess what we would say is given the timeframe of when we sort of had the opportunity to look at the organs, what I understand is you already have a zoning benefit, you sort of now propose that council, there's like a long sort of zoning process that occurs before you come before you, you weren't engaged in that process. So looking at the substantive terms of the orders on their face, we don't have anything that raises red flags, but clearly there was a lot of sort of work and thought done and putting together the substantive items. Some of those terms, we could really, if, if the city council were to promise to look at Some of those terms, we could really, if the city council were to promise to look at first, Adam, who wants to down some, have a team to ask some questions about. Hey, this term or this definition or whatever. That would, I guess that would be my response. If you guys want sort of some further development, other than us just looking at the basic words, self-approach, sort of substance being presented in the packet, we can sort of do so. We just sort of, the timing of it hasn't allowed that sort of, sort of discussion to happen.
That's, that's my follow-up question, I mean, given the timeframe that we're under, a year ago, what we have based on the scene in the face of it? When can we come back and later and do a tweak in this?
So certainly, we start our work, so you can amend without much issue, obviously, as long as you still follow the air, that's the subsequent adoption of prior city council meeting. Um, and then of course, the actual effective date of that will then be published after publication. I don't have any issue with subsequent amendments of that, the zoning ordinance process, of course, is much longer. So even for us to sort of now go in and even sort of tweak that process, but it's been recommended that it's gonna probably slow down that zoning. And remember that once you sort of adopt it, you would have to go, it's not like we could sort of subsequently propose amendments to that through city council. We could certainly probably initiate amendment at this level, but direction, we had to go back to your fat line body, which is your planning commission. We've got obligations for a fifteen-day public hearing notice, we would have to hold that public hearing, the subsequent thing that go through and fragmented back to city council. All of that can certainly be announced, um, after you go about this one.
Got it. Last question for Chris. Um, then Agent U.
Yeah.
Is that the, that's where it goes?
Yes, yeah, we have, so that if you guys had questions that were related to us in perspective, we could get to the voting homes ordinance. Uh, we do.
Right?
There are at least some people here that must follow this for, uh, that's some questions.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
So, uh. Is there, is there a public independence? Special item, yeah. The business. There's fine attribution tenant.
Like you're coming up, are you?
Peter's gonna stay downstairs. Um, I can, I can touch on, we can discuss it for that one day. Are you a good job? Um, so really, Peter actually is the one that's composing this. And essentially what it is, is a, um, retention tool for our employees, um, related to our values and our contributions. Um, and the, the idea is that if you're here for five years, uh, the city would increase the employee, employer contribution to eight percent with a two percent, um, contribution by the employee. If you're here for ten years, that increases to ten percent with the four percent, um, contribution by the employee. So it's, it's native, the city kicks it up two percent, the employee also has to give them two percent. And then if you're fifteen years, it goes to twelve percent, um, looking for this, actually, uh, creating six percent.
So one to the pension, yeah, correct.
Yeah, the, the boys aren't willing to add extra two percent and deal with that essentially. And really, as the policy presented, with that for the amount too, as far as, uh, impact to, to the city budget, that's five thousand dollars. Uh, Peter, what, some bullet points here, uh, just touching on the highlights. First, he, he talks about the, the need for employee retention, um, you know, around the state and on the nation, it's, it's difficult to to keep public employees, um, and you know, he touches on the fact that, um, there's a soft cost or hidden cost that we play turnover. They were experiencing, certainly experienced that in the last year. Um, you know, this statistic that it's about pointing instead of the annual salary to bring some of the bonds. Um, and then again, just touching on the fact that it's based on longevity, fact, sky, private service. Um, then the next bullet says, factor of retention tool. Um, next bullet says employees, employees must pay the flag. Um, next bullet says costs is payable as a fresh fund, fifty-five thousand dollars, it stands. Uh, one of the comments, we changed the, you know, contribution at any point in time. So those are the highlights, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Good question. Right, I mean, why do you read the, the other cap on the contribution or?
Um, that's a good question, I believe, Cindy, that we can contribute more, lots of certain.
The certain, huh, that certain labels must pay to us, are they in that hat?
Yeah, I need, I need you to run that again, it's, no, I'm just curious.
It's like twenty-five thousand dollars a year to manage, quote that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I just, thanks for putting this in, because this is a smaller area, is this, uh, keep us competitive, this, my orders? At least I asked, because it's all part of the, the number of, it's down here. And approached, or wired first, that have tried to approach them at times, so. Will this make us more competitive in that? It will, uh, yes, it's, it's the benefits that, um, have kept some of your key personnel in the city. And this will certainly add to that.
So obviously, you're a face of this, you even have something working.
See, this makes you want to say at least five years, like fifteen years, I'm really.
Much grateful how they.
No, it is, it's, it's good, it's good for Peter, uh, you know, we're not talking about the huge amount of employees. Uh, you know, this is the one, one of, one of the things that he asked for, again, given the budget factor, I think it's a lot to learn.
So I'll be, uh, the, uh, for action, and maybe the council more, but I think you first.
Uh, so Peter and Cindy, who's the third, Scott, yeah.
One of those lines kind of Scott, I'm Scott, as you see, we see, some require that, I'm just curious.
Any other questions? That's all. I guess we'll be moving on to, uh, to agenda items. Um, I think there was some question about chartering, or what, we talked about within sidewalks, so if you want to clarify this. I had a chance to come and kind of peruse your agenda with Ryan this morning. Staff, good question, is something you want to follow up with?
Yeah. So the way these special events have happened this year, they're, uh, very late coming, and understandably so, given COVID, I guess historically, the way special events get viewed, they come to staff two months in advance. Everything gets vetted in advance, and then it comes to council, and everything's been discussed by the partners. Had a chance to review it, run the public works and the services, uh, etc. Uh, so when I first saw this, uh, that's just kind of inside. When I first saw this event come through, which I understand is a longstanding, but I could see, uh, one concern that came from that and uh, was emergency services employee. I don't know how big these, these tents are, if they're on the road, but now the fact that there's boppo panios. Um, there may be some conflicts with admin and off-look to get emergency services through some of these side streets. I understand that they're blocked off, but of course, I predict the fire department still will need to access buildings. I suppose they can fall through a tent for other reasons. So that was just like one of the concerns that came up immediately. I've shared, I've shared that with Greg, I think I, I presented like four or five concerns to him. Uh, hopefully he'll join us on Monday to, to address those. Uh, the other thing that comes up with special events, especially this year being short staff, um, is are these organizations providing the orderless? Uh, because really, we don't have enough person to service that, because we do have service trash, um, on hand, so. That's another question, I don't know if those have been provided in the use here, I don't know, maybe come, uh, to the sidewalks and all, but. Hopefully we need this question.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess I'm gonna say that's reported by Scott. Basically, yeah. All of the street, block, so that.
I said, so I see, I'm hearing, it seems early. You know, it's like.
I have the opposite.
So I'm sorry, I got a.
It was, it was a lot of.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor, page seven is talking about vendor parking. Are, do you know, are there having other people come in that don't have shop?
Uh, I don't know, they are outside vendors.
Okay, so then it says, have you, no, you know, at where you approach, approach your vendor department, high school parking lot, that really would be different than the other day's staff? It would be, it would be, um, shop, it would be parking, wouldn't it? And that says where the inner urban be utilized, if, will that mean there'd be extra runs and so on?
That's one of the things that Ryan had talked about this morning. Talked about more than just checking, you know, feelable here, pardon my, about high school, this is the time they're starting to be stored on that campus, and I'll make sure that it's not, it's a, what do you call, a main parade at the.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, that would be even difficult to be out there, but, but again, this, even if there is a decision in coordination, schools, please, uh, check for that. Staff up there or something like that, it's been a lot to, you know, somehow make sure that most kind of hurt people with it. Up there, way to park.
I was gonna say, outside lawns, shop, or something, you don't get there early. That's right.
Yeah.
You're still there by the time the G D car. You missed, I got all your Chinese shoes.
Yes, but this, this does speak to our, to Brian's highlight, I think, to sort of get these type of events more tailored out in advance. So we can compare against other things that may have in the city. Uh, so I think obviously this one's come out, it might be helpful, you know, first about, just from the point of. But I think, yeah, a little bit, it's sort of, you, the shop, uh, but it's counter, that's, comparison, what else is going on? The city's a little bit, this. Uh, second comment is, I have heard from other business people that say some of their neighbor businesses can have fairly loose, um, interpretation of what's a sidewalk, so what's not. Maybe they can do some things out apparently, which annoys some of their neighbor businesses, but they sort of do a bit of sidewalking and kind of free lands, or some did here. I had that, basically, a few times. Um, and it's work.
No, you were, you were coming in.
No, no, I, I, what I, what I was trying to say is, uh, apparently, some people, some shops do put things out.
Outside laws right now.
Exactly.
Such as cross street.
That was kind of approved to the pop-up at work, that was part of that, part of language license.
Yeah, okay.
It's allowed through that.
Okay, so that's the, it's a lot of them that happen. Because they're up there, I have heard some of the clients saying, my, my employees should use for the sidewalk, so it doesn't feel like, kind of, earlier is doing every movement, so.
And I think so far, uh, Ed, we made the action, so we felt, uh, we also. Fortunately. That. Yeah. Uh, here.
So that's, yeah, discussion, but this is a good example of, of a, okay, there's a, well, like. Special, you know, except, except the gender, because we're not proper at any point. You have any questions?
Just real quick, a comment just based on previous sidewalks, so even with, not on those pop-up pedes, oh, I can't be, because those are not gonna drag everything out. In the restaurant, it's, yeah, not, usually those things aren't, alpha male, but.
I think there are a couple of concerns that have been voiced, some of them directly across, they want to go all the way to their normal tab. The other side is the pop-up patio, is it, yeah, it's facing those things. So that's probably gonna be more, uh, on, on, I mean, something can be, well, that person couldn't understand. Which mind you aside.
You can always have a cheap drive. I don't know, or something. Pictures. Get a drink with. Second.
Uh, any other, any other questions? If not, we'll, uh, go ahead, ten production ordinances, uh. Usually, oh, it's here, it's here, yeah.
I would just say, I'm delighted that you asked, and, uh, just diagnosis priorities, um, and then, you know, considering that, what was the percentage of second homes? Seventy-seven, seventy-seven percent, I think it's a great way. Yeah, it's a great way to build community and use the neighbors, um.
Yeah.
Very supportive.
We're not getting someone to complain at all, or pay on any question or twenty-five, but you live in an old residential area, this is indeed a part of that, so. More power to them, to throw some, one decent one in there. So, uh. Any other, anything, other form, yeah, okay. What are your recommendations from, Victor, Greg, guys, um, inside?
Directly at one, but typically I've seen them go sitting audience, leaving the building, yeah, so I would say, what, what is suggested? Typically, what we would sort of engage in is probably one of two things, uh, if you were to abstain, then we just basically have the person sort of sit in where the public is sitting. Because that's when they're not engaging in official discussion, um, it really is sort of public here. So I think that sort of the looser sort of formality would be, if you abstain from a vote, you sort of should also abstain from deliberation. So we assess if the person not deliberate or vote, and wherever they sit is for a rally. So, yeah, I would be comfortable with you doing.
I, 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 I would say I'm more of a wanted, I would be, maybe public here, maybe, you know, more comfortable to say. I was not so.
Yeah, no.
You may just say, hey, here's where people are, I'll sit out there.
So the votes taking place though today, so the first was. The motion today will be to place these items on the agenda on Monday for action. And this qualifies as the first. This qualifies as introduction for, that's really what it is.
Well, let's just kind of, I want to get, you know, just some, see, it's gonna. Now let's just kind of figure.
I'm gonna start out, as I was planning, I said on the planning commission, and we had two and a half hours over this the other night. And, and the reason we're here is because it seemed a lot of checking, they act at their dates these days, and nobody does, so people gather, can actually have some type of arrangement, then we need to follow rules, so, so we have two types of ordinances, we're gonna do the regulatory and the zoning. And the zoning ordinance has to be reviewed and forwarded by the planning commission, which is what the city council can act, and the regulatory, the city council can act without planning mission, but we did ask them for so many years, and so they gave us lots and lots of ideas, so. Uh, just briefly, the zoning ordinance is, that is the vice podium home, vice full-service arena. Says that the voting homes would only be in full-service arena, full-service arena can only be in neighborhood of the arena district. And then it has kind of special land, which requires a true, the five, 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 city.
That was good. Just you go, you go there, you gotta go.
That was a, uh, nice. And I think it's been considerable amount of time in cliff before I brought it to the planning commission, going over this, um, concerns and problems to be formatted. But the idea is to define markets of broad, not, well, what is the voting home? And then they go there, narrow zoning area where you can have that, because it's, you can always expand that area, but it's very difficult to be tracked. So this is kind of almost like a file, to see how it's, they were, like, it's, there's a lot of hoops and assortments to, to, there's no in order. Like, it's, well, there's a lot of hoops and assortments to, to, there's no in ordinance, thus restricted rare, and, um, where you can have those podium homes. And it is just too small, so one small zone district that's separated to parts. So that would be the zoning, um, regulation. The regulatory was then budgeted on making sure that the regulatory ordinance matched zoning ordinance. There would be catalog for one another. We, um, added a couple of items, not too much, you know, and, and we did think of some things that were pretty much business decisions that the marinas would have to make. Didn't necessarily have to be regular, for example, um, could there be short-term rentals in the podium home? That might be a business decision for the marina to make, rather than, uh, council action items. So that's an example, and if you want to, we need to flip through it, I'll quote a different section, might do that, or if you want, what's, what's, what's.
Council, you. I highlight.
Highlight. Pages twenty-one, through twenty-two, through twenty-six, are the, um, zoning. And then through the definition of a floating home, the definition of a full-service marina, and then we allow for floating homes to be in neighborhood marina district. And the, and maintaining as a special land use, not as a bioralite use. And then to the parking, in the parking lot, the parking department, to require two parking spaces per floating home. And then, on page forty-seven, the regulatory ordinance starts, the findings are the justification for calculating the floating home, of floating homes. And that goes on several pages. And then the purpose is to establish civic arts, what codes they have to be, how to be safe, sanitary, and a process to license the floating homes. And we have the definitions, which the enforcing officer, with the city manager, or the city exhorter, I think they're going to need, to activate that after competition. And we do definitions, again, which is, then some definitions on ordinance. Then, um, page thirty-one, we start the, uh, regulation. This is one of their, which we're going to change to. So it did say, the floating home should be ordered, uh, second space of the city, or a J plan, sure, I've got, except in local plans chapters. But they previously, the way it flipped and drafted, it said, for more than fourteen days. Planning commission felt pretty bad, and, and they gave the license before they put in, now you put into the Florida fourteen days, then they give the license. And Marina owner had to have that license in his hand, that would, so. There's the notification process. How long the license is put for, and the, um, enforcing officer, you, you both a license, and the appeal process for that would be to city. Then, on page thirty-five, there's a requirement for the marinas to have access, walkways, parking, light, garbage disposal. I shouldn't say garbage disposal, that should complicate, garbage removal, or solid waste management, but, not they garbage disposal, better ask. And lighting, um, left full service, water hookups, um, gas hookups, open spaces, insurance. We didn't talk about insurance, all was, our experts hiding through.
More about insurance, it's, um. There are, yes, who's?
Okay. And then permits for the marina, they have to have a permit to have the floating homes there, so we can inspect all the requirements for lighting, garbage removal. And so, we have chance to, that, take that as a permit. Building code, except for the foundation, it has to meet the building code. Uh, and then this laniness matters on page thirty-nine, move, uh, floating home from one place to another, still have to meet all the same requirements, and it's a new license. No water pouring at page forty, can't be four, four dollars a plate, or two channel. And, um, short-term rental is the one that we thought is a business decision for the marina, rather than, for the market as far as, and, no licenses, they were kind of, this, things that are considered to be, which is that they're allowed out of floating homes. And those things like, no, and, 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 maybe too much. Oh, it's still here, um, but it, it's too much noise. And we remove that, because those things are committed in any kind of home. Not just floating homes, but those, those, the, 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 you can have every kind of thing that you can't do, do it now. Those, so, the, 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 so, I don't know, second, but it's, it's not a lot of, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a. And then, um, again, the appeal process, if somebody has a lot of great decisions, and that goes to. The only other part we add is we define that the height can't be more than fifteen feet deep, and the length is no longer than, so, forty-seven. Yeah, the height is no higher than fifteen feet, and the length is no longer than, so, forty-seven. Or longer than, so, ten-five, three, on this one. On the zoning?
Yeah.
That's all, that's to make a determination whether or not it is a houseboat or a floating home. That's kind of like, I think, Chris kind of alluded to it, and he said, okay, is it a house, is it a houseboat, or is it a floating home? And just because you call it a houseboat, doesn't mean you're the one who agree with you, you call it a houseboat, you have some specific things that, okay, I can say. Yeah, if you call it a houseboat, I'm not going to, it's floating home. We also. I'm sorry, I was gonna, I'll put, half a page through there. Under G, just before H, um, one to floating home license, if you're going to vote, no good license for the same floating home shall be issued, so that not, probably, um, okay.
Questions? Um, I was wondering if you come up with twenty-seven, but, I'll take it.
What I think that I came up with at twenty-seven feet is, there have been homes already constructed, floating homes, and that would have thirty, three of the plans to those, and those are twenty-seven feet.
These are ones that are operating.
The ones that are otherwise, I thought.
Mary, can I, um, question about, very similar, what, what do you expect to be changed? You know, obviously, people representing the floating home over there are going to, most of us, you know, some of these.
Uh, I guess I can speak generally, I would, I would say, certainly, if you were looking for something that was specifically, would like, you want to do that sort of a closely connected session, understanding that we're not a public theme, but. Um, just sort of like in general terms of what I would sort of consider related to the process that you could think about is, um, it, what, sort of the process that you went through on the zoning side? Did you substantively sort of follow your, your land use plans, your master plan, your future land use goals, and sort of figuring out how this use fits into the community? It seems like that you have, I think that also, um, you would have to look at the fact that when you adapt the police power, or just you amend the chapters, to add them to your city code. As sort of Cindy talks about, there's an interrelatedness to sort of other provisions that you have, and so there may be sort of questions or comments about how exactly, does this regulation and this licensing see the end of other items? So for instance, um, the panel was made that there used to be a list of nuisances, those were removed, I mean, generally, to, that, that would make sense to me, because you probably have a nuisance section that would look at the nuisances in the city code, that would apply to all uses within your jurisdiction. So you don't really need it, to sort of spell it out separately, but there may be questions about, um, how exactly may other provisions in years that we go, either conflict with, or be combined with these provisions? And then, uh, sure, that if any, people who want to challenge ordinances will come up with a whole host of reasons, and whether or not they're valid or not, you probably would want to look at those at the face of the time that they're raised, and decide if they have merit, that they would require amendment to ordinance.
Um, it, it looks to me incorrect, but I'm, this does create a pathway, if someone really got a strong desire to create a floating residence in the city, if they follow what I think are reasonable and prudent regulations. But there is a pathway to, to do so. Okay, that's my first question. Uh, my second question is, um, as this is currently written, as the city is currently sort of developing, do we have the, needs the definition of a neighborhood marina district? To use examples, so, for use examples of where, where the current neighborhood marina district's with.
Where neighborhood marina, zone district, uh, South of Yatup, is in neighborhood marina, zone district.
Yeah.
And Yat services, is in neighborhood marina. Um, Sergeant, marine, is not in neighborhood marine, so.
North or, yeah.
North or, okay, don't, yeah.
So, South of Yatup.
And Yat Service.
And the Yat Service.
Well, actually, there's, true, as a, as a, as a, um, in the area, what the southern.
Right.
Okay, the southern, the north side, you go down, sorry, Yat, sorry, that's, from the driveway in, to the south. People building, from north, to the right, and the docks, and the docks at the end, and the docks behind the suburb, they actually are the southern, and the one by that, see. But anyways, and there are, you.
There are, yes.
So that's actually, that doesn't mean down the road, we can't add.
That's right.
You know.
We can, I would go ahead.
Yeah, that, that, and must be, I, I think this does create a pathway, if someone wants to follow sensible, reasonable, prudent regulations, you know, for good, or as a path, but it's, but it's, but it's.
Some guy who's business over business, it's not, yes, do also, I think, so, that, about this. And, and know that, like.
And my final question, this is a direct, it's a hand, or all, but just the enforcement officer. Uh, as this is written, is enforcement officers sort of bound by these regulations? There's not a lot of latitude vested on, um, the enforcement officer, who grant or not grant, your sheet is bound by the ordinance.
Yeah. For example, if a person didn't want to put up for waters, then that would be a reason for, which would be then a capable.
Yeah, but their hands will be tied, and they're just saying, well, I'm not, I'm on a, a, but, they, your sheet, because they're bound by following this, right?
Yeah.
Ryan, you want to start?
Kristen, I, I actually don't, you sort of made it, I was just gonna add, if you look at sort of the zoning context, and sort of pointing out the reasonable process you have available for you. There's also sort of another zoning process, which is rezoning, so like, for instance, if you were to look at, even, let's say you have a career that exists outside that district. If those land use bowls are sort of harmonious with the district, they could obviously go through rezoning, and that would even potentially add viable, uh, land uses within the city to that district. So there, it was, it doesn't necessarily require going back and mending and adding this use to new districts. Uh, it could be that as time changes and sort of, uh, uses transfer or sort of develop in the city, you may have a rezoning section that are requested for properties to be rezoned to that district. That would then make them viable for that special land.
One, yes, those, few houses that are, are being, of vehicles, are considered impossible.
Floating home?
Yeah.
I think we first would trust that in moratorium and acknowledge that they exist, they could continue to exist, and under these zoning ordinance, they would be considered legal, non-conforming uses. But regulatory ordinance would still apply, so they would still have a license for their sale.
So they've been permitted since we got it, but not only.
Yeah, they were, they weren't issued a permit, because, you know, that way to issue a permit, but, um, it wouldn't be allowed them to be there, and they acknowledge that if they're in moratorium, it's, um, they would be, they would be.
Yes, I'm sorry, and then more, loans, more, safer, so, today, our hope is to have one motion, to have both, it's not acceptable, Monday, then Monday are all going on this individual.
I split them off in one option for one day, you could do that, or, um, give it to the territory.
You, I think that the one benefit of separating them out is that a zoning ordinance amendment is subject to a referendum. And so a lot of times, it's just helpful to keep that action separated, somebody who got seven days to file on the kind of notice of reprimanding, it's sort of, so, no issue with sort of first reading, it actually has been read, they've been introduced to council, I think, satisfied requirements of your charter or your city code. And then I think for purposes of, uh, Monday, I would sort of, presumably recommend that each one be brought up, and that if you're gonna use a resolution to adapt them, have a formal written resolution, you get a roll call on it, if you're gonna do your motion vote, still do a roll call on each ordinance being presented. Sort of a motion, support, court, discussion for each, and then a roll call.
So I will revise sample motion, or maybe it will be two separate.
Okay, okay, all right, so today, so today, we have.
You can do it together.
Just for clarification, what, why do not all marinas follow by this, like, you know?
Because they're not in, for example, like Sergeant's marine is in, um, so, water street south.
Are they able?
More able to water street south.
That's kind of backstabbing.
Yes. But it doesn't mean that they can't be.
Add it.
Yeah, that's, if they, I'm gonna say, you have.
Put a follow-up on there, um, the current existing floating structures, uh, when they currently, they're not.
There are, there's, there's, I'm sure, I'm sure, they've been only, for, like, it's funny. Look at the, like, the, there's a, one, but, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen.
Yeah, I think that, so, the, 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 because, one of the things to get to about it is, you could sort of pick a position. Um, you, you, I believe that sort of, kind of, absent, car value, and moratorium, that both cities just require, or sort of, they can continue to exist for the moratorium. I'm not sure if it was ever, sort of, suggested in the moratorium that they were lawful, so I guess, you could, I mean, there is sort of a position that, uh, you adapt with zoning ordinance, they never previously had a use that would permit them. And so it's a position, I guess, to decide whether or not they would be a lawful or non-conforming use or not. The other benefit of the sort of approach of, if you treat them as a lawful, non-conforming use, that would also be sort of added, is, your zoning ordinance is gonna have a non-conforming lawful use after. And there are actual limitations with respect to sort of the operation, addition, or changes of use, of floating home. So, like, another thing to think about, it's like a conditional limitation for somebody who, if you do treat them as having been there lawfully, and you apply to control a lawful, non-conforming use doctrine. You still have another chapter, rezoning ordinance, that does apply to them, as it would relate to sort of operation changes or additions made for those structures. Uh, and it happens a lot, for instance, where if you do the C D B district, or you got a central business district, or you've got a single tenant, it's on outskirts of that district. It obviously exists there, but you now decided that through your future land use plan, you do your current plan, you really now eventually will be, kind of, used, authorized in your commercial district. And so that home, that home sort of has limitations, that you'll be able. And so that form, that home sort of has limitations on being able to be altered, expanded, uh, or having changes of use. And a lot of times that process requires them to even go in front of the zoning ordinance appeals to get an approval to make those changes. So it's sort of an additional limitation, even though you're sort of looking at it right now as something that exists under that car driving and moratorium, it's only subject to your police power ordinance. They are still subject to your zoning ordinance, they're just subject to a different chapter if you treat them as a lawful, non-conforming use. Which has sort of its own requirements and limitations. The idea of being able zoning, we're sort of always trying to sort of to discontinue, uh, uses that we don't think should be in our current land use plan, right? We're sort of thinking that those may create nuisances or they're no longer sort of harmonious with the current land use district that we have. So the whole sort of goal of that zoning ordinance chapter related, you're not conforming uses, it's kind of balancing, um, somebody's right to not have their property taken, a, a taking issue, you're sort of balancing that against giving them. Uh, some enjoyable use of their property, we just sort of, sort of hoping that it slowly resorts and turns over to use.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to get an answer there. I understand, like, in, in, in that, you know, that there are a few that are around, is, does this give us the ability to sort of create a, a path also to help them get, if you want? To provide a, a, a means of not just, you know, either let it stay as is, be a potential environmental hazard, number of ways, self safety hazard, but provides a framework that then. They can kind of walk a little more path or walk an original license to provide that.
And I think that's what's the, that's what the framework we need to provide in your police power, so you've got the license, you've got sort of this triangle permit period, they have to allocate themselves to sort of hear some of those environmental concerns that you just raised. That's sort of setting aside the whole zoning context, where we're trying to decide where is the use most appropriate and is this in the city?
I have, uh, actually another smaller question. Are they, if, are they able to be now grandfathered, but they don't have anything? Is that what, is that what we do? The ones that are already there and non-conforming, are they in essence grandfathered? If they were, not, not those are, if they were here, they'd be grandfathered then? This is, this is who that?
I believe that would sort of be intended of your car value, your moratorium, right? And you were suggesting those that existed, you were at least harming the non-incessively continue to exist under your zoning.
Right.
So if that's sort of the, the position that's been taken, then yes, they are grandfathered under your zoning ordinance amendment. They would not be grandfathered with respect to having been drafted in your police power ordinance.
So they have to come into compliance then with the regulatory.
Correct.
Okay, so they will have to do something if they have.
They have to come in and get a permit, and give them a permit process, and fill out the application and then all. Show it to the city manager that they have kind of all standards to get a license, they won't be issued a license, therefore they're going to have to comply with.
So if they are. They do the definition of a zoning home, that versus they are.
So if they, if they want to get permit, you know, if you have a marina that's not considered full-service arena, does that home then have to, um, get a permit to allow them to stay there?
Well, that's something that you would have to sort of, you don't have to apply the, um, grandfather disposition under the zoning ordinance or your police power order. So you would sort of have, that marina, you can go there, not legally appropriated district, they're not a full service marina, they're going to have to get a permit. So maybe what you're telling me is is that we could not give them a mortgage permit. But I don't know if the same requirements are in your police power ordinance that exists for a full service marina. So I think that first is where it currently located, that, that enterprise can still come in and get the permit to allow mortgage. And then the actual houseboat has to get the triangle permit.
Okay.
But the issue might be whether or not there's sufficient facilities there to satisfy police power ordinance, so somebody might have to make some upgrades or make some changes to comply with it.
And in order to make some upgrades, so to speak, they have to have the space to do it. And that's, that's clear, there's not the space that's needed for an arena.
Like for charging and the.
All that stuff.
The dumpster location is.
Yeah, I can't see this covered up in the norm. Sorry, just. Just one more comment. In my mind, we don't just go after the commercial district. Prior to this ordinance, people could put it in their backyard along the town, right up in their house, they could just put one of these things, they have a gas house there. And into a fish trap. And I just don't think. But my interest definitely that's as critical as just addressing that.
Well, I think initially, you know, the purpose would be to work with those structures if they have some time, you need some time to deliberate, careful study issue. But I think, you know, you do want the one fault, environmental, health, safety standpoint, so I think we would like to have more rigor around. Any floating home, I guess, I guess what this is designed to do, to make sure that these, these structures get fit, they're approved, they deal with requirements. Do you protect our harbor, do you protect our lake?
And that's one of the one purpose of ordinance is to be safer.
You have a question?
Yeah, I don't have any more questions.
Yeah, I have a question about, um, commercial use and, um, maybe you can help me, but it. Are we just, um, pooling out commercial use, um, for instance, I mean, I love it that Fishland's has, you know, we've done with the Fishland's and Fishland's at the houseboat. You know, say the souvenir wanted to do something, or Mike Johnson wanted a gelato boat. I mean, it seems to me that in, in a proper, you know, kind of commercial area, it can be a fun thing, I don't know. Are we closing the door on that or the, do we need to look at that separately? The, how? How does that, I don't think that it can be a commercial change. So it's just partially, they're not permitted in floating home, but if it's not a home. Then, then they could have one. So they're going to be included. Okay, so if you had, um, under floating, you have a. Art painting room, you sold hot dogs, you can pass them by, and all these guys would be your furniture in your home. Okay. So it's a total, either two different animals or. Two different animals. And then also I have a question, there, uh, there's one bed and two parking spaces. Yes, so should we just be one parking space or, um, just needs sort of a. This would be hard on you guys, if we really just set two, 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 there, two is just the warmer. Okay. Yeah.
Other houseboat people. Chris.
I'm going to do this. And I, I hope all these, we, by tweeting them and I agree with. So we can definitely. Motion to place the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to men's sections one, five, four, basic period, day, state, zero, three, five, top, one, five, four, period, zero, three, two, top, one, five, four, page fifty-five, title, one, four, title. Fourteen fifteen of the Code of City Sodic, Title Ninety Six. Zoning ordinance on July twenty-six, twenty-one, regular council. At regular council meeting, Jennifer Action, and at chapter ninety-nine, by all nine of the Code of City Sodic, Title General Regulations on July twenty-six, twenty-one, regular council meeting, Jennifer Action.
Okay, we have the motion by, uh, Lewis to approve. The motion as presented, any further questions, comments?
Should this come forward?
Yes, yes. Now, uh, my last, uh, no call.
Peter Smith, yes. Louis, yes. Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Ben?
Justin.
Oh, Karen, Steve, um, Justin and.
Yes. We've got, give us all the comments. Probably have one communication. Also comments. One, one, one comment immediately from you, Cindy or, or Ryan. I think we should at least bring the public up to date on our relationship, you know, where we're going now with the new council meeting. That's, it's time.
Just, just.
Yeah. There could be a.
I would promise, Mayor, I'd just like to thank, uh, my commissioner, who worked really, really hard on this, uh, for a long period of time. It was, was long, but it was needed to just iron out a couple of things, and so it's a big issue that. I'm the one that requires to do. Do the things we try to avoid.
City managers have requested to. He's headed a petition with roughly, they said he's. And, uh, we actually thought it would be something that would kind of mirror our efforts during this part. It actually was exactly opposite. They wanted us not to add, being that our current ordinances were starting. Uh, Ryan and I, I think, respectful. That, that, that was respectful, was a kind of station. And, but we said we're active. I mean, it was respectful, was it a kind of station? You can probably check out where this came from.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would, I said they just.
Certainly, it's that they have. Because in the term of the council, or did they really ask?
Uh, I think it, the term.
I don't.
But I don't. It wasn't, it wasn't presented that way. I, it was just, I just want to bring it up today if you could hear something. Uh, am I, I'm summarizing my. So if there's a motion to oppose or to not hold on, say that, may very well come back. Well, this, this, I'm sure.
I think one of the substantive standings on, on there, I'm most moratorium, the, you know, the recommendation part of the council that moratorium lasts for years. Right, and had a window, and that we were getting close to being meant to do another window, because what they were recommending is that we do not take another, we're studying this. Um, so that's a bad idea.
So I have all permission, I think that very is part of now, I don't know how we, how you want. It's not about that.
Oh, come on, man, is it worth it all?
Yeah, I mean, that's, okay, if you guys want to see.
Yeah, I would love to see that. I, it's just, I'm, it's interesting to me.
Yeah. Vice bride, but we just.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, you know, this has been a complicated issue to deal with, and I appreciate it, and I'm pleased with all. This may be a harbinger of something that I, I don't know what else to try to hear about, uh, as, as the community continues to become more and more popular, with more and more visitors, more and more people want to come here and rent the place for the, for the. Um, I've heard from a number of residents, uh, expressing concerns that, um, you know, people are, are packing a lot of people into individual household well beyond what's designed for or approved for. That leads to the knock-on effect of a lot more cars than the typical housing design to accommodate in a driveway if it has one. Uh, so I think that's, that it's going to be coming on our plate probably sooner than later. It may look exacerbated by this sort of depend of energy, everybody wants to sort of get back to normal this year. Uh, obviously, the point of July was extremely successful and brought a lot of folks in, but I, I bet you get a lot of resident comments on, uh, it was unsafe because, you know, I talked with the chief, the chief couldn't get a vehicle in if there's an emergency, there's some streets, uh. Close enough now. So I think that will be something that's going. Apart from that, we'll put, see.
Any other comment from the council? By, uh, second ID for, uh. I will pay a vote to say yes.
Yes.
Close. Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. Glad to be here, everybody.